My name is Biers Abou. I am the Community Outreach and Palestinian Education Director at the Palestinian American Community Center, which we just say PAC for short, in case anyone doesn't know. So on behalf of everyone at PAC, I do want to welcome you and thank you for coming tonight here, for spending your Tuesday night at 7:00 with us for this very important conversation. Just a little bit about why PAC really was interested in hosting one of these forums. I'm sure, or I hope all of you know how civically engaged PAC has been, especially in the last couple of years, working around the census, working on voter registration efforts, a lot of get out the vote work. But more specifically, because, one, we are located in Clifton, and the city of Clifton is very important to us. Serving the entire city of Clifton is important to us, not only the Palestinian and Arab population, but also because the youth are one of the most important parts of our center, right? And today is all about education and making sure the youth are getting the best that they can from us. And so that is why PAC was really honored and did not hesitate to host this forum. So I'm gonna kind of keep it brief. I'm gonna be kind of passing the mic with my co-moderator, a very important member of the PAC community, Bahima Bil Dabu. He's going to be moderating most of the discussion and asking the questions. And I'm gonna go ahead and pass the mic to him. Again, there are snacks and refreshments in the back at any point if you want. Please feel free to get some.
Thank you, Abi. I want to start by saying thank you for coming. I am doing this myself as a community member within PAC, the Palestinian Community Center. It's been a home to mine. I was growing up in Clifton, it's been here since 2014. And I thank them for doing this. The first overall, doing it with council. And now I believe this is the first for the Board of Ed. So I'm glad that there was a slew of candidates through this time round. I'm gonna introduce the candidates name by name. And then, ground rules going to be every candidate will introduce himself one minute. They will be timed. For all the candidates, your timing will be one minute for intro, 90 seconds to respond, and then two minutes for closing. There will be seven questions. So each person will start with eight questions. And we will open up to the public. You will be passed around index cards, so you can write down your question. And then, if there are any questions, we have some backup questions that the community center created. Rania, who is the executive director, Rania, thank you for everything you're doing. She has a timer right there in front of her. So you'll see when you have 30 seconds left. And this is, this will be livestream on Facebook and YouTube.
There's a glare on it, I'm sorry.
Is that better?
Yes.
I'll hold it.
Any questions for the candidates, besides what I just said?
Good?
We're good?
Good, yes, sorry.
So candidate number one was not able to be here tonight, so he has asked me to read over a statement. So, if you men you know, he hasn't been able to attend most of these forums because he had back surgery the day after the Republican call happened. Daniel Ledet was raised in Drackett, Massachusetts, and attended Drackett Public Schools. He graduated from Drackett High School, class of 1982. At the age of 13, he started working for the family business Ledet and Company, DCI constructed roads, sidewalks, parking lots, and driveways. He worked with the GS DCI for 20 years, learning all facets of highway and bridge construction. After leaving the family business, he joined Local 56 Pile Drivers Union in Boston, Massachusetts, to work on a dig. He spent the next three years working different phases of the massive project. In 1999, Local 56 sent him to J. Cashman, Inc., to work as a pile driver on the North Portal, which is located at the south buttman of the Lanyard-Zackum Bunker Hill Bridge. That was the start of a 10-year career with JCI that had him involved with projects throughout the continental United States of America. He was also privileged to work alongside the Army Corps of Engineers with his projects. Some of the projects had his budgets up to $300 million. He has been a resident of Clifton since 2015, when his family moved from North Carolina to take care of his sister-in-law during her final birth cancel battle. One of the main reasons Dan is running for the BOE is to get back to our community to ensure the safety of everyone of our students. He has witnessed countless pedestrian and vehicular accidents during the school day and at boat drops, drop-offs, and pickup times. He believes no child should ever fear arriving to and leaving from school. If our children are scared, learning becomes extremely difficult. One of the ways to accomplish this is to make the drop-off and pickup safer through better, more visibly marked crosswalks, specific drop-off lanes, and even parking structures where possible. We as a district need to provide our children with more comprehensive mental health education and support. Our children have been through unprecedented events and need to have the resources to prove, to provide the help, excuse me. Dan believes there should be open lines of communication between the schools, teachers, parents, and the district. This would include ensuring that the dates for progress reports, report cards are clearly marked, a parent, a student represents committees that affect them directly, such as a dress code policy. Lunches, et cetera, and those IUPs, 504 plans, have the services needed, including assisting parents with identifying additional resources and services. Lastly, Dan believes every child in Clifton is important and wants the best quality education for every student because we are one Clifton and we can build a better future for all students together. So that was from candidate number one. I'm gonna introduce every single person, and then we will start the timer. Rania, right?
Mm-hmm.
So candidate number two is Mr. Bob Diarcò. Go ahead.
Good evening. I am a lifelong resident of Clifton. I have haven't graduated from Clifton High School in 1972. I am a retired human resources professional with over 25 years in the field. I have extensive experience in employee and legal relations, affirmative action, equal employment opportunity, and budgeting. I received a BS in Political Science from St. Thomas of Villanova University in Miami in 1976. After graduating, I attended Potomac School of Law in Washington, DC, where I attained credits towards a law degree. I am a two-time member of the Clifton Board of Education, and I have chaired both the Finance and Athletic Committees. I also served on the Library Board of Trustees as President in 1984. I have dedicated over 45 years to the youth of Clifton as a member of the Clifton-Strengton Soccer Club, as both a coach and member of the Board of Trustees. I ask for your support. Thank you.
You're on.
Good evening, everyone. Line number four, my name is Mark Brunsack, and I'm running for a seat on the Clifton Board of Education. I am a son of immigrants. My father was a refugee. I am a lifelong resident of Clifton. Graduated Clifton High School in 1999. Hold a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting from Ramapo College of New Jersey. And I have a passion for donating to various children's charities. I've advocated for the educational needs of our community's children for the past 15-plus months as my own child, as well as several niece and nephews and godchildren, all attend Clifton Public Schools. My running for school board will allow me to continue working and advocating for the education of all children in our community. I think we can work together, and we can all share the knowledge and satisfaction that we have provided for the educational needs of all children, and have built a district for students, parents, teachers, to feel that they are welcome and they belong. I ask for your support because it's time for a new voice to put our children first. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Frank Casper, number five on the school board ballot. I'm here this evening to ask for your support. I am running for reelection. I am a lifelong Clifton resident, and I have been an educator for the past 13 years. I've been on the school board for the past four years, along with my two members sitting here with me this evening. I have a passion for helping students, and I want to make sure that if reelected, I have the students in mind, as well as the taxpayers. In the past four years, we've done an excellent job helping our students to make sure that they have a well-rounded education through the programs that we're running. So with your support, I'd like to continue that for the next three years. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Abraham Isman. Now it's working. Sorry about that. Hi, good evening, I'm Abraham Isman, running for Clifton Board of Education, number six on the ballot. First, I want to thank the Palestinian American Community Center for inviting myself and the other candidates here. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and listening to myself and the other candidates. I would like to just start off with the recognition of the heroic Clifton teachers who, day in and day out, give it their all to their students and to our community, especially over the last 20 months, where they've adapted to extremely difficult learning environments and continue to do an excellent job. So a round of applause for them. I'm running unbespoke and representing us all. That's not just a platitude, that's something I need. I really am running to represent every stakeholder in Clifton. Every student in Clifton, every taxpayer in Clifton, I will represent. I pledge to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer money. I pledge to be transparent. And I pledge to fight for the educational needs of every student, no matter how they learn, and if they need special needs or if they need an advanced type of session, I will fight for their needs. Once again, I ask for your support. On November 2nd, as one of your three votes, Abraham Isman, number six on the ballot. Thank you.
Dr. Lucy Danny, I'm running for reelection, number seven on the ballot. I'm a lifelong resident of Clifton. I have a daughter who went through the Clifton school system and a grandson, so who will be going through the school system, so I have vested interest. 20 years as a classroom educator, 10 years as an adjunct instructor for Syracuse University, a commissioner for over 10 years on the board, served as vice president and acting president of the Clifton Board of Education, and then unanimously elected by board members to serve as president of the Clifton Board of Education. I serve on several board committees. I have over 10 years of training through the New Jersey School Boards Association. This year, I earned the title of certified board member through them. Fulbright scholar, I hold two master's degrees. This year, I earned my doctorate in Educational Leadership from St. Peter's University. I'm passionate about being on the board, and I want to continue to serve the Clifton community. So it would be an honor to serve the citizens of Clifton. So please consider me Lucy Danny, number seven on the ballot.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marlena Cowan, number eight on the ballot. I was born and raised in Morris County, but I've been a resident of Clifton since 2006. I'm a mother of four boys, three of which attend Clifton Public Schools, one to soon follow, he's only 14 months old. My husband is George, who's a lifelong resident of Clifton. He's a CHS graduate of 2000. He's also a teacher and a lacrosse coach up at the high school, and has been for the last 18 years. I've learned to love this community and the people in it, and I decided to run to give back to my town. Those that know me, I'm involved in anything and everything that involves my kids, involves school. I'm the school 14 HSA president currently, and I was on the committees for the referendum this year. Besides life at home, I'm the payroll and benefits coordinator over at Glen Ridge Public Schools. And I am currently getting my master's to get my certification to the Department of Education for a Business Administrative Certificate. Phil, number eight.
Hi, my name is Judith Basford. I'm number nine on the ballot. I moved to Clifton in 1986, and I hit the ground running. I have been involved in Girl Scouts, HSAs from elementary, middle, and the high school. I am the vice president of Clifton Against Substance Abuse, and I am the coordinator of Project Graduation, who runs the Safe Night for Students. I am an associate at Berkeley College, and I also work for a nonprofit up in West Milford called the Association for Special Children and Families. I am the senior training officer up there. I have my master's, I have my master certification, my certification as a board member, and my master board leader certification. In 2019, I was awarded the School Boards Association School Board Member of the Year, which is the highest honor that you can get from school boards. It's independently run through a Pennsylvania unit. I have done everything from groundwork to top work in school boards. I'm on county, I'm on the state. I was president of the State County School Boards Association for four years, vice president for three. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also, number three, Alan Paris, was, is not here today. So he has to tell everybody he has departed from the committee. I apologize for not being here tonight. So there are seven questions. Each person will be able to answer each question. Question one, we'll start with candidate one. Question two will be with number two, and so on. Once we get to question number six, if you have any questions that you want to be read off for the candidates, raise your hand, and I think it will, oh, there we go. The team will come around and hand over the index cards. This way, you can write down a question, and then they'll be read off. So here we go. So the following questions will be asked as a candidate for the Board of Education. Some questions will be asked about you working with others, and some questions will be asked about your personal stance on certain issues. Number one, starting with Sudhir K. I'm sorry. Number one, starting with Sudhir K, but everybody listen to the question, but I'll repeat it again. For the incumbents, not including the referendum, what have been your biggest accomplishments as a Board of Education member? For the challengers, not including your personal feelings about masks, what have you seen or heard about the current Board of Education that falls under your category of needs fixing, and how can you help?
Well, I guess, needs fixing is a question that, you know, we'll answer in our own minds. In my mind, what needs fixing in the district is the losing of good support staff. One of the things that I mentioned earlier in my intro was that my background is in human resources management. And I'm quite the, I'm quite concerned about the number of people that we lose to other districts. So one of the things that I would like to see us do is find out why we're losing people. It's not always money, although that's probably the biggest reason. But we need to find out why we're losing good staff members to other districts, and we need to try to come up with some type of a plan to keep them. And I think I would be a good asset in that regard. Thank you.
Mark, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just what we can do to fix.
What, what, what do you label under fixing, needs fixing, and how can you help?
So the residents of Clifton, line number four, Mark Brunsack. Just want to let you know, we had an initiative earlier this year that went up for bond referendum. It's $152 million. So there are apparent issues in this city. And lots of infrastructure needs to be upgraded. That includes air conditioning in the high school. It includes safety areas for students as well. That's an integral part as well. So these are the types of things to do this. Now, I've told you that I have experience in accounting, in addition to that public accounting, so I have audited these things. So these are one of the things I'm talking about, to ensure that that $152 million is not squandered. The bids have to go out, public notice. Whoever has the best bid, they provide that. And to make sure that these monies are not, you know, wasted. And other safety features are some simple things that I think. Painting crosswalks in a timely fashion, you know? And I see some of them, they're still faded. We don't even have crossing guards at some of the places. I was just passing by this afternoon. Not all the school, it seemed like a couple were missing, but maybe I was there too early. I don't know. So I'm all about upgrading the infrastructure, making sure the monies aren't wasted, and to ensure children's safety. Thank you.
Okay, so for us, it's the accomplishments.
So the question is, for the incumbents, not including the referendum, what have been your biggest accomplishments as a Board of Education member?
All right, so I would have to say the first accomplishment that we had was hiring a superintendent that cares about our students. Our job as a school board is to hire a superintendent. And he has shown us in the past two years how he cares about the education of our students. And he worked, in my opinion, he works very well with our school board members as well. Number two is Sid, while sitting on the technology committee, we had gone one-to-one with Chromebooks for all of our students. There were a few hiccups through the pandemic with technology, but we slowly got that fixed. So that was number two. And number three accomplishment, the third accomplishment that we had, the first two years I was on the school board, we kept our taxes under 1%. And the past two years, I'm on the school board, our taxes remain at zero.
So in regards to what needs fixing, the big thing, one of the main reasons I'm running, is the children who learn differently, who have special needs, who need IUPs, who need to be assessed properly, and get those IUPs. Unfortunately, I know from my own personal experience with my son, as well as I've heard from many other parents, many times that is not done in a timely manner, and it's not, or it's not done at all, and these children suffer because of it. So that's number one, is we have to do better as a district for that and as a school, that is something we're directly responsible, is to ensure the proper education of every child, no matter how they learn. And if it's a funding issue, let's fight for more state funding, for more federal funding. Let's meet those needs of every child, no matter how they learn. The second thing is being fiscally responsible. Like Mark said, there's been a huge referendum passed for badly needed infrastructure updates, but I want to make sure that money is spent correctly. That is our money, this is taxpayer money. Over roughly 50% of your property tax goes directly to the school board. So that means we gotta go through line by line, look at everything, and say, are we spending this money appropriately? And will this help our pay children in Clifton? And that also goes to my other message of transparency. We have to be transparent with our voters and with our stakeholders. Everything we do has to be fully transparent to them. And they have to know how we're spending their money and how this will help educate their children. Thank you.
Yes, I will read again, Lucy.
Yes, just want to make sure again.
I can hear you going to. For the incumbents, not including the referendum, what have been your biggest accomplishments as a Board of Education member?
So I think that one of the biggest accomplishments for me of being a Board of Education member is I currently earned my doctorate in Educational Leadership. So an accomplishment for me was to be afforded the ability by my board members to be elected as vice president and acting president. I was vice president, but then quickly became acting president. And then, right after that, to be unanimously voted by my board members to be president of the Board of Education. So I think for me, again, just being that that was what my focus was, it was a great accomplishment. I think, sitting on the education committee, what was important is, you know, looking to make sure that we improve the educational experience for children. And since I'm on the education committee and having 20 years of experience, I bring a certain skill set to that table. And so one of the other things that we did was, you know, trying to get our fair share of funding for the Clifton School District, which, you know, has been increasing the age. So that's really a positive thing, because we can put that money towards improving the learning experience for students, and then especially right now, their social emotional dressing, their social emotional needs due to the pandemic. Thank you.
I have three items that I'd like to touch upon. I know the Board of Ed has recently started looking at traffic safety at all of our schools. I'd like to be part of the board and a part of that committee to see that follow-through. We still have a lot of parents and a lot of families that are having issues with pickup and drop-off and the safety of that. Another item Mr. Diarcò briefly mentioned was staff retention, also student retention. Getting our students to stay here and can follow through through high school, and how we can get that done. Our staff retention, hire within these new jobs that we're creating, we should be posting them and allowing our staff currently to be able to apply for those positions. Another thing is our before-care and after-care situation. Our Boys and Girls Club does amazing job, but our town is so large. It is in high demand, and the Boys and Girls Club can just not handle as much as we need them to. So I'd like to see if there's something else that the district can do to step in to help those families in need.
Thank you. Any well-trained board member will know that you can't speak for yourself as an accomplishment. You have to speak as a part of a unit. So these are my personal views and opinions. I do not speak for the board, and I do not represent the board. Through consensus of the board, we hired a superintendent. $168 million referendum. Committee-wise, one-on-one Chromebooks, we kept the budget low. My favorite one is that we got the CPAC, is the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, up and running again. And it's functioning well. If anybody that has a special needs child, you'll know who I am talking about. And in a tenure with my other colleagues on the board, I had the pleasure through consensus, making sure a pre-K was open. We saw field turf on the lacrosse field come to fruition. So there were a lot of improvements security-wise through the district as well. But we've expanded a lot of things. We've done a lot of initiatives through consensus. I don't speak for the board on my own, but it was a pleasure to work with everyone on those initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Number two, we'll start with Mark Brunsack.
Number?
You've been asked about critical race theory in past forums. We know in the state of NJ, in New Jersey, CRT is not mandated. But the state of New Jersey passed a law in March of 2021 to include diversity, inclusion in curriculum. This is a different spin than the other past forums. Beyond just saying, "I'm fine with it", give us your personal stance on using critical race theory as a scholarly framework to be implemented in educational classroom settings to include the governor's mandated curriculum on diversity and inclusion. Mark?
Children need to learn that. While we celebrate the diversity of cultures, we need to understand there's only one race, the human race. Lots of bad things have happened to lots of people. That's why we study history. Learn, learn the good and the bad. Don't repeat the bad. We can start focusing on things that we can unite on, not things that divide us. We have a great diverse city, and I'm pretty sure that social studies is a core class that teaches you a lot about history. Thank you.
To me, diversity and inclusion is very important, that our students need to know and learn within the classroom. For me, being a special ed teacher, incorporating inclusion with my students into the general ed population is important to me as well. So general ed students know how important it is to know what other people, how other people may act in different situations. So through diversity and inclusion, we can be teaching our students how to live their lives the way they are, but also knowing how diverse of a country we are and how diverse of a city we live in. So helping incorporate that into our classrooms will ensure that our children know and learn how diversity and inclusion is important to everyone.
Frank, would you just want to repeat it, the question, please?
Yes, sir.
So you have been asked about critical race theory in past forums, and we know in the state of New Jersey CRT is not mandated. But the state of New Jersey passed a law in March of 2021 to include diversity, inclusion in curriculum. Beyond just saying, "I'm fine with it", give us your personal stance on using critical race theory as a scholarly framework to be implemented in educational classroom settings to include the governor's mandated curriculum on diversity and inclusion.
Thank you. I'm gonna answer this in two parts. Number one, my opinion on critical race theory is a little bit irrelevant because I'm gonna go to people who know that best, and that's the stakeholders. That's the school superintendent. You can say, hey, how are we gonna best educate our children? Gonna go to the school principals, the teachers, and the parents, and say, let's work together. Is this the framework here in Clifton we want to use? And if they all say, hey, this is the framework we want to use, then let's use it. If there's a different framework we want to use, then let's use that framework. So my personal opinion really is not gonna come into this because I'm working for the stakeholders, the people who elected me to do a job. On the topic of diversity or inclusion, that is something that's extremely important, especially here in a city of Clifton that's extremely diverse. Here I am, an Orthodox Jew, in a Palestinian-American center, you know, doing a debate tonight. Because only you are concerned about the same things I'm concerned about. That is educating our children properly, keeping our taxes low, and making sure we're getting the best bang for our money in education-wise. My name is Abraham. You guys probably know it better as Ibrahim, if I'm pronouncing that right. So you see, we're more the same than we are different. So instead of focusing on what divides us, let's focus on the greatness of all of us, and what brings us all together, and how we can do better to achieve our common goal of educating children. Thank you.
Yes, Lucy, I'll respond again. I'm just gonna say the question I'm asking, I said the, for you. Beyond just saying, "I'm fine with it", give us your personal stance on using critical race theory as a scholarly framework to be implemented in educational classroom settings to include the governor's mandated curriculum on diversity and inclusion?
So I think that in education, there are, you know, speaking to colleagues, since I am in an educational setting, there are some teachers that do teach the, I would say, parts of the critical race theory in a classroom. I mean, it can be done in a sociology course, where you're talking about the I mean, it can be done in a sociology course where you're talking about the historic racism and how it impacts the structures that keep minorities down, that keep minorities in position. So there are areas within the school where you can implement the, where you can implement critical race theory. I think that, again, because it is mandated, I'm sorry, I heard something going on. Sorry. You should just silence the phones. Sorry.
Thirty seconds.
It's distracting, okay? So inclusion and diversity is mandated, and I think within that framework, which that has to be, inclusion and diversity has to be across the board in subjects. So somewhere within there, you can talk about the social structures when it comes to how racism has impacted, kept minorities down, and that's what I have to say. But on another note, I think the cell phone should be silenced.
Thank you. I'm just going to add that. If you have your phones on ring, please put them on vibrate. It's got to be one of the board members.
No.
Our packed board members, it was. And then for the candidates as well, you can just flip your phones over and make sure they're on vibrate as well. Just thank you. Marlene, would you like to repeat it again?
Yeah, I think, okay.
Great.
So to be honest, I'm not familiar with all aspects of the state mandated curriculum. However, I do believe that teaching our students respect and equality despite any of our differences is extremely important. And I would like to take it a step further for what the curriculum that we do implement to provide more resources to our parents so that they can mimic what is being done in the classroom to teach equality, to teach diversity. By giving those resources to our parents, they can then reiterate what they're learning in the classroom, which I think would be a great step in our education system.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to resource, I have two resources I'm going to reference, New Jersey School Boards Association on inclusion, diversity and CRT, and New Jersey 21 United, their handouts that I can give people later. It's about giving people opportunities that they wouldn't normally have. So if you talk about critical race theory and equity and diversity, we have an equity and diversity committee at the high school. It's not enough. We need to bring it down to the middle schools, the grammar schools. We need to bring those committees out to the community as well and make it go global. We need the stakeholders from all different walks of life, every different area of life to get together and find out what makes people different and give people opportunities. One of the best things in my life is having a thirty-one-year-old child that knows all this stuff. And when you drive in the car and you say the wrong thing, she cuts you right down and tells you what you're doing wrong. So she's my reference point. She talked to me about my privilege of being a white woman, but talked about how I experienced some kind of oppression by being a woman and being a woman with disabilities. I'm dyslexic. I have body parts that are handicapped, disposable. I have a knee replacement, I have fake teeth, whatever, and I wear hearing aids because I can't hear. I'm deaf and one of you. I'm included on this panel of nine people every day, every, every day of my life because I'm a board member. I respect everybody's culture. I like to learn about it. I like to know about it.
Thank you. Number three, we'll start with Mr. Casper. Oh, I'm sorry.
I could have skated with that one. As a former affirmative action, equal employment opportunity officer, the inclusion and diversity part of this equation is very near and dear to me. I think that I would like to see our district be more, I guess, more welcoming of all people, races and colors and backgrounds and so forth. And by, the one way to do that is to have the administration and the board work together to come up with a plan so that we can do this. And I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diarco. Just for the, ultimately, the incumbents that have the challenge, there is a diversity committee at the high school and it is integral its way down to the middle school. I don't know if you tried diversity. But, Nina, could you remember, moving forward? Number three, Mr. Casper. The superintendent has already stated that he wants to start an academy to build a pipeline for teachers from diverse ethnic backgrounds to better represent the entire student population. What is your personal stance on hiring qualified teachers of color in various teaching positions?
For me, being an educator myself, our students don't have an opportunity to have teachers that look like them. Most of us as educators are white and sometimes I'm in the minority, teaching in an elementary school because there aren't very many men in an elementary school setting, but it's slowly coming through there. I think it's very important for our students to see someone that looks like them. So I'd like to encourage our superintendent even more to hire a more diverse staff that our students can go to and feel comfortable with. So I would, I would love to help support our superintendent by making our staff more diverse within Clifton.
Thank you. So absolutely should have a very diverse staff. As Frank mentioned, when you have a teacher who looks like you or is similar to you, it makes the learning experience easier. Unfortunately, that's not always so easy to do as most people in colleges studying to be teachers. I spoke with somebody who's the chairman of the education department at a local university. She told me there are very few people of color in the classrooms studying to be teachers. So if we can encourage our students to be teachers, give them those opportunities in high school for public speaking, to test out, say, hey, do I like this, being a teacher? And then we can support them in that goal, in that journey already at the elementary school and high school level, and then bring them back after they get their degree to our district. And then they're coming back to their students and saying, hey, this is the classroom I was in fifteen years ago and now I'm teaching you. You see, you can do it too. That's a great thing. So we should do everything we can to encourage that and to promote that as we have more, as diverse as our community is, that's how diverse our teaching staff should be.
So I have to say that Clifton is very diverse and studies do show, I actually had participated in a research that looked at studies where they had students that were being taught by teachers who looked like them. And they said that students improved academically because there's like cultural connections that they can make, there's, you know, connections that they can make on deeper levels. And so as a result of that, education improves for those students. So I think it is very important, especially since Clifton is so diverse, that that has to be a priority, you know, to have students, have teachers, staff in the building that they can look up to, that look like them and say, you know, that they can come talk to them and they can understand them culturally. I think that, again, it's very, very important. We have diverse city, we need a diverse staff.
I agree that we have a very diverse community and I'd like to see a more diverse staff. I'd like to suggest that maybe we have some of our high school students shadow staff members to see if teaching is really a field that they'd like to go into. If it's something that they would like to go into, let's encourage those students, that diverse group of students, to obtain their associate's degree through Clifton High School that we provide. And once we get to that point, if they finish their associate's degree, let's encourage them to make the step further to go into a school, a teaching college. Malcair State is known for their teaching program. Let's have them one-on-one set up with their counselors to pursue their teaching education if that's something that they want to do.
Thank you. We have sixty-five languages that are spoken in Clifton and our, our staff does not represent that mix of, of cultures. Dr. Robitussi, when he first got to Clifton, started to do that and he hired a few principals and he started talking to the education committee, when I was on the education committee last year, about doing this, starting a pipeline for, for teachers to start representing the culture of the student body. And he's working on it. And then COVID hit and it stopped. And then we, we talked about it all the time. We all talked to the superintendent by our own. And we speak to him about ideas that we have and things like that. We do have articulation agreements for associate's degree. We do have articulation agreements with colleges for a lot of different levels. But if we could go to the teaching schools and actually bring more of those programs into our district and start with people that are of different ethnic backgrounds and get them together with the students and bounce off your idea, Mylana, which is a great idea, we can bring that, we can bring that home because it takes nine people to approve what the superintendent wants to bring to the table. Without five votes, you don't pass it. So I would be more willing to have as much culture. My family has a lot of different cultures in it. I have Hispanic in it, my family. I have Percy in my family. I have African-American in my family and Caucasian woman. We are very mixed in my family.
As I mentioned earlier, and I know I'm repeating myself, my background is in human resources management. One of the areas of expertise that I do have is recruitment. Hiring people through, of color in the district is very important. It's paramount for our students to have people who look like them in the classroom. I'd like to see us do some fairs to bring up the qualified people that we have in the community. And by doing this in, you know, in town, we can attract a very good applicant. Also, I'd like us to work closer with the local colleges and universities so that we could do that with them also. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Bruntzak, line number four. Everybody, I just, I want, I want everybody to know, I'm looking for qualified teachers and staff. That's what I'm looking for and I'm looking for the retention. Some of my best teachers, Barack Josie, Michael Nwuchikwa, Dr. Thomas, Mrs. Baber, these people there, you know, I had a diverse number of teachers and professors throughout my entire career. And it could be in something as simple as Bobby's saying over here, all you need is somebody to recruit. You don't need to create a new committee and bloat the, bloat the Board of Ed as it is already. We're trying to get these kids to be nice to each other, to have a well-rounded education and for them to get the best shot at being successful in whatever field that they choose when they get out of high school. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for qualified teachers, qualified paraprofessionals, period, and the retention of them. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Shazam. Start with you. Every board member should understand that knowing policy and completing workshops makes you a good board member. What allows you to feel that you can be successful as a team member of the Board of Education?
So I'm going to go back to my work experience. I work as an emergency nurse practitioner and without teamwork, I can't accomplish anything. I may see the patient, diagnose the patient, but I need the nurses to work with me. I need the support staff in the ER, the ED techs to work with me. I need other doctors to work with me. We, if we don't work as a team, we're not saving anybody and everybody comes into that ER will die. So all I do is teamwork. We work together at every level. And it doesn't matter if I've had a bad day, the doctors are relying on me, I'm relying on them, we work together. So working with the board will be that same thing. We have to work as a team because as Judith mentioned, without five votes, nothing passes. So I got to work with the other board members and that's what I'll do. I will work with everybody there to create the best possible outcome for our students. Thank you.
So I have served on the Clifton Board of Education for ten years and I would say that I'm a team member. I think it's evidenced by the fact that I was elected as the vice president and then I was unanimously elected as president of the Board of Education. So I think that, you know, my board members, I feel that, you know, again, if you're elected, and again, I'm speaking to myself, but I could only think that they respected, they realized that, you know, I'm a team player. Thank you.
So I would definitely say I'm a team player. I'm currently the school fourteen HSA president. I have been on the board for the last five years. I'm also part of the North Jersey Payroll Chapter. That's part of the American Payroll Association. I'm a board member. I volunteer. I think communication is the best way to be a team member. Not everyone's going to have the same opinion, not everyone's going to believe in the same thing, but I'm all about communication and listening to other people's opinions. And even if we have differences, coming to a common ground.
So in the state level, I sit on the thirty-fourth Legislative Committee. I sit, sit on the Finance Committee for New Jersey School Boards Association, Sub-Resolution Committee, and I attend the County Leadership Committee's meetings as well. We come to consensus through communication and collaboration. That, what I'm trying to say is, it's about relationships. Relationships are a two-way street, just like a marriage. A marriage or any other relationship takes work. You have to work at it. When you come to a meeting and you come with an idea, it has to be listened to and digested and discussed. That doesn't happen all the time. Just, just before last year, the Policy Committee could never come to an agreement and we didn't have, we had forty-seven policies that never were addressed. When Dr. Robitussi met me for coffee one day, when he first got put on, I said, look at the policy book. We have forty-seven policies that need to be fixed. Within an hour, he had the policy book down to school boards, we had it updated and we brought it to the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee works like clockwork because we collaborate. We argue, we yell, sometimes we holler, but at the end, when we walk out of that meeting, it's a togetherness and the policy is sound and it goes to the full board. But without consensus of the board, it doesn't work. Like when they took the three minutes away from the public, the committee agreed to keep it, the rest of the board said, no, we're taking it away. So that's what happened at the Policy Committee meeting. But we work as a team because it's a relationship.
In my opening statement, I mentioned my past as both a Board of Education member and a library board member. My background with the Clifton Stadium Soccer Club and Little League Baseball and CYO Basketball. What these things have in common is that I've been successful in these positions throughout my years because I have been able to build consensus by bringing people together. I am an individual who looks to build bridges and not put up walls. And I look for what we have in common and I'd like to bring that to the Board of Ed once again. I think that would be a step in the right direction for all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, as I said previously, I'm looking for things that we have in common. We want the kids to be nice to each other, have a good education, try to be successful. Is what we're doing at that particular point in time or whatever we are discussing at that point in time, is it putting our children first? This policy is this agenda that we are discussing tonight, putting our children first. And I haven't seen that over the past fifteen months. There was a time last year, or this year, excuse me, in May, when I contacted the Education Committee and requested that they have an option for in-person schooling on Wednesdays because there still wasn't, May this year, okay? Vaccines were readily available. Anybody who wanted one ages twelve and up, they had the opportunity to do that, right? And they still told me, and they told the city of Clifton, that not due to education purposes, due to the fact that there were year-end activities, it would be better that we just left the Wednesdays full remote. So this is what we're up against, everybody. Vote, line number four, please, to put our children first. Thank you.
Is that your turn? No, I forgot to close it.
Well, it was his timer. Do you have, I still have 20 seconds. Do you want to, do you want to do it?
Sorry, I guess I.
That was his timer, yeah.
I got a special ring when the wife called. It goes to my mother.
Roger, Roger.
It's the Batman call.
Even though we don't, we don't or may not agree all of the time, we need to know that we are providing the best education for our students. They're the number one priority of why we're here. So communication and teamwork need to go hand in hand while being on a school board or in any type of organization because we have one mission. And our mission on the Board of Education is providing our students with a well-rounded and the best education that they can have through the programs that we run. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, Brinziak, this question, because most of you answered it, intertwined it. Here we go. We'll use this one. What is your stance on parents using public funds to choose the school of their choice, whether it is public, private, or charter? Dr. Danny?
Yeah, yes. Well, I have to say that as a citizen, you know, we do have choices. And if a school isn't giving you what you feel is necessary, then, you know, you have the choice to look to somewhere. I think that it's important that the public school survey and look and find out why it is that maybe parents are choosing other options and see if the school could possibly, you know, accommodate and change whatever it is to sway individuals towards the public school system. But if they can't, then, you know, I, I have to say, I mean, I am a history teacher and it is about choices and, and individuals having that freedom and that choice. And if it's something that the public school system cannot provide, then I would have to say that I would agree with the parent. But again, I do feel that the public schools should reach out to those parents and find out if in any way they can alter or change things to help put that into the curriculum or change the curriculum to bring those individuals in.
So my answer tonight is going to be similar to what I answered at the Republicans Club. We're taking away funding from our public schools. And the question is, why are our families choosing to go to a charter school or a private school? And it's great that we have a choice. It is amazing that we have a choice. But we also have to look at ourselves, why are they making the choice and the choice is not our public schools? Our, just the other, I was talking about how about a couple of weeks ago, a Facebook post, a parent was saying that her child was taken off the waitlist for a charter school and she was asking, "What's better, the charter school or, I'm just going to say, School 14 because that's my home school, School 14?" And I thought to myself, this parent doesn't know and she's already taking, she's already put her child on the waitlist? So why? We have to survey our parents, uh, parents, just like Commissioner Danny, I agree with you. We have to survey our parents. We have to have a retention committee. We have to promote our district. It's nice to be able to have a choice, but then we're taking those funds away from our clubs, our sports, and anything else that we're providing in our public school.
So we have 11,000 students in district, 633 of them go to charter schools. So the thing is about charter schools, we can give you all the money we want, you want, you take the money, but you're not held accountable for that money. It's a business. There's a lot of people that are opening up charter schools to run a nice business. The issue is they're not held to the same standard, as standards as a public school is. My worries and my advocate voice has always been in Trenton, when I go down to advocate during legislative meetings, is to hold charter schools accountable for the same standards that our students are getting in the public schools. If we are spending $12,000 to educate, and I'm throwing a number out there because it's a rough number, $12,000 to educate a student in Clifton and we give them $12,000, they don't have to have certified teachers, we do. Our costs are higher because we have to give all these mandated things that the federal government, state government puts upon a school district. So when I was at the Republican thing, I came up with the idea of branding. I spoke to the superintendent about it already. We need to brand what the gems of Clifton Public Schools have. We have a lot to offer. My daughter has her masters in communication. My son has a criminal justice degree. They're fine people. They went through the school system. They got the best bang for their buck and I'm proud of them because they come back and they volunteer in this community. I want everybody in this district, all 10,403 students that we are in care of, to have the best bang for our buck. Thank you.
Yeah, public, private, charter. The bottom line is, is that we have to do a much better job of showing people what we have to offer here in our community. Our schools are second to none and I firmly believe that. Under the leadership of our superintendent and the board, I believe that, that we have a great system and we just have to be able to market it better. People seem to think that the other side of the lawn is greener and I don't believe that. I think that we need to do a better job of, of letting them know what we have to offer. And by, some of the ways that we can do that is by having open houses for parents, prospective parents, and to, you know, let them see firsthand what we have. You know, when I was on the board in 1998, 99, that was the beginning of the charter phase and we fought tooth and nail to try and hold back on the charter schools to no avail. Thank you.
If there wasn't a market, public charter schools wouldn't exist. So, so this is the point. Clifton Public Schools has an outstanding option at the high school. You could graduate with an associate's degree. That means you're potentially saving two years of tuition. I don't know that much surrounding, I don't know any other surrounding school districts that offer that. So this, this is tied, tantamount to what the branding is as well. But again, these are public charter schools, so public funding is going to that and unfortunately, the Clifton Public, Public School District loses money as a result of that. And again, people are choosing it because they believe it's effective for their child. So again, these things wouldn't exist. The board needs to look in the mirror and see why that these exist in the first place. If they're doing it, you know, and they're not tantamount, my understanding is, these public charter schools, public charter schools again, I want to repeat that again, they are public charter schools, they are publicly funded, that they need to be audited once every three months, maybe not to the extent that the Clifton Public School District is. But maybe the Clifton Public School District could free up some money if we didn't have to be so rigorously audited ourselves. I think Money Mike Uche does a fantastic job with our district regarding the disbursements. Thank you.
Parents do have a choice where they want to bring their students. I truly think that if we communicate better with our parents and show them what we're offering in our school district, we can keep those students in district. Like Mr. Brinziak just said, we have programs where we're, our students are leaving high school with an associate's degree already. We also have a program, for example, where we have students that are in a program for early childhood, for example. And they, this will help them see if they want to be an educator or not. So I think we really need to communicate with our parents and have them in to see what we really offer. So this way, we keep our children in district because as a school board, I think we need to ensure that they know that we care about their opinions.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Question is, what is your stance on parents using public funds to choose the school of their choice, whether it is public, private, or charter? So not to get into the larger debate of school vouchers, that's a different topic for a different day, but we will avoid that. But first is you have to just separate the issue a little bit. Religious schools take limited to no funding. They take certain funding for some mandated services that the boards are mandated to provide through federal funding and stuff. But other than that, if a parent's making that choice for religious reasons, to send their child to a religious institution, we have to respect that. And still understand, they are still taxpayers in the city. They want the best possible school because those are still their neighbors and that affects home values is having great schools. And it reflects the people they will interact, their children will interact with as adults. So it is in everybody's best interest to ensure we have the best possible schools. In regard to charter schools, I think we have to go back to the parents, the stakeholders in the education, say, "Hey, why, what does that school offer that we're not offering?" Clifton High School, we've heard all night about all the great programs it has, associate degrees, a pathway to teacher, becoming a teacher, all these other great programs Clifton Public Schools have. So what does that school have that we don't have? And let's build that program, be it an arts program, be it any other program. Let's find that, say what it is, and let's offer that to our students. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cowan, we'll start with you. Clifton Board of Education has a Legislative Committee. If legislators were in front of you today, what would be your one top priority?
Of course, I don't think it would want to have to really think about. So I'm not familiar with all the legislatures, so I'll be honest with that. So to give you my top priority, I don't think I really could answer what my top priority would be. I would like to review all of them. I did start reviewing all of our board policies. I know you talk about how important board policies are. So legislators is definitely something that I would like to look into. I would like to read more about and go further with the board and discuss those items.
Thank you. I sit on the 34th Legislative District of New Jersey School Board, so this is an easy question for me. Mandated funding, every mandated thing that comes out of the federal, federal government or the state needs to stop. We cannot afford it. When they turn around and say, "You have to mandate this, you have to mandate that," and we don't have the funding, then we have this, we've already figured out the budget, we've already figured out what we're going to spend it on, and then we have to stop, go back and redo it. It's really not fair to the people in our finance department and our, our business office that they have to keep on redoing this, reworking it because we get a federal mandate. It could be something from as simple as the masks that you're all wearing because we mandated, we got PPP money, but I'm just trying to give you an example. Every mandate that comes down that is not funded, especially with special education, is a drain on the district. So that would be my plea to the legislators down in Trenton, to please work it out. Stop making districts fund mandated things that we cannot afford anymore. Thank you.
I, I have to agree with Commissioner Bassford. State funding is very important. We keep getting things thrown at us, mandates, left and right, and we're not getting our fair share of the monies from the state. So I think we need to do a, a good job of not only going to our legislators and letting them know what we, what we feel is our fair share, but also to let them know that mandates without funding is not going to work in Clifton.
See, everybody, this is why elections matter. Local elections matter when you get mandates. I don't care if it's from local level, a state level, or a federal level. These are the types of things that occur. So it's absolutely, it's an albatross over here and for you to be able to fund it, it just takes away from your kids. That's exactly what it does because this is mandated to be funded, even though it might not be best in the, in the district's interest, you still got to do it because it's mandated by the legislature. Gee, thanks. Are you going to cut us a check too? No, of course not. And, and, you know, they, they said they try to, you know, they're trying not to increase the property taxes. How are you supposed to do that? And who suffers as a result of that? Our children, right? So voting matters and if you don't get these same people that have been there for 10, 20, 30 years, it's going to be the same story every year. You could, you could reach out to them, you can tell them, but this is, this is what these, these types of things do. They make everything go wrong and mandates, they just mess everything up, just like this. When we can operate over here, we know Clifton's a wonderful district and we could operate it. We have wonderful people at the Board of Ed, the administrators over there who could handle this. Thank you.
Even though we've, even though there has been an increase in extraordinary aid for our special ed population and an increase in our fair funding formula, we're still short-changed and we need to continue to go to our legislators and let them know that we're being short-changed. And the mandates that they give us isn't right because they're not funding it for us and the taxpayers are suffering and the children are suffering. So what we need to do is to continue to fight for our funding so our students can get the best education that they can get.
Just pardon me if some of my numbers are a little off. This was quick Googling, so it might not be the most accurate numbers. I do apologize in advance if some of them are off, but the general idea is going to be true. Clifton, according to niche.com, which ranks school districts, is the 15th largest school district in the state of New Jersey. Our annual budget's roughly 210 million, 198 million coming from taxpayers and 12 million coming from the state. For the 15th largest district, school district in the state to only get 12 million funding, when everybody here pays state income tax, where's that money going? It's funding other districts. We're not getting our fair share back. So if I'm in front of legislators, I'm going to go to them and say, "Hey, listen, you got to give Clifton more money. We, we pay our taxes, we're a large district, we have 10,403 students here, so we need that money to fund it. We need to have better special education for these teachers, these students. We need better regular education for these students and better special programs for these students, to better prepare them for life. 12 million is a joke. We have to get more money from the state. We all pay into that same coffers." So that's where my part is at lie. And the same thing with the federal government, going to them and saying, "You got to give us more money to keep the taxes down. We're all paying into the same bucket. Let's get our fair share back here."
Okay, well, in Clifton, we've been fighting for our fair share funding and we have been receiving increased funding. But I would ask for more, you know, obviously because Clifton is such a large district. And I would also say to take a look at the mandates and if the mandate is necessary, then yes, I do agree that it needs to be fully funded during the entire time. But I think to look at which mandates are required because many times the mandates just create more paperwork, more time, that really takes away from student learning. And I see that firsthand, working in a school district. I see where a lot of the mandates, it's just paperwork upon paperwork upon paperwork and following with things and then teachers doing that. And that, that's really taking away from student time that teachers could be working with students. Administration could be better using their time to do things that would aid student learning. So I would really say that, you know, like I said, fair share funding and to really look at if they're going to put in a mandate, a mandate that isn't going to create additional workloads and less student contact time.
So speaking of mandates, in January 2019, Governor Phil Murphy signed and mandated into law a bill requiring public schools in the state to teach about the political, economic, and social contributions of individuals of the LGBTQ period. What is your individual stance on teaching about LGBTQ in the three educational levels separately of K5, 6, 8, and 912? So that's elementary, middle school, and high school.
So getting back to the words that my daughter teaches me, a couple of months ago, was intersectionality. And I didn't know what that meant, so Samantha gave me a life lesson on what that meant. It meant it's about respecting the person's whole self. Some people identify them Some people identify themselves as a man, some people identify themselves as a woman, and we have other people that identify themselves as something else. That's intersectionality. What causes a person to identify themselves and who they are because of their experiences, how they were raised, and their culture, their religion, their environment, it's all about that. I believe that we need to teach it. We need to start generically in the lower grades, make it gentle about different things coming in. You can't give curriculum that you're giving to high school students to a kindergartner. But you can teach them about certain things, and if it's done appropriately and mindfully and delivered by the right people, it will be okay, and they will understand it. I wish I knew what my daughter knows now. I wish I had her education when I was growing up. I didn't. My parents couldn't afford it. I grew up through collar workers, and they couldn't afford it. So my daughter has her master's degree, so she's my insightful peer of the group, Potatica. I go to her to get my answers. But we're all learning, we're all evolving. Yes, I'm for it. I think it's a great way to start teaching people about themselves. You look into yourself when you start to learn about other people, when your curiosity impeaches you. Thank you.
Okay, I really believe that the elementary level would be a starting point for the training or education in this particular area. I think it would be done very sensitively at that level. And as it goes on to the middle school level, and then ultimately to the high school level, more and more can be brought out and brought to the students' attention. I think it's very important. It's the world we live in, and I think it's necessary for us to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I know somebody personally who teaches in the high school, so they just essentially say, you know, Sally Ride, Caitlyn Jenner, two-time Olympic gold medalist. So it's not in the high school setting. It's probably appropriate, but these are just famous people. That's what they are, and they're successful people, and they're just so happy to be of some, you know, however they identify as. That's what it ends up being. So if that's what you want to do, okay, I guess at the high school level, I guess they could say it. So again, these are one of these mandates that Governor Murphy has, it's one of his pet peeves or whatever. I don't understand. There are great people out there, very successful people, and they just have, you know, they just happen to be a certain way or whatever, have feelings towards a certain way, or they identify as somebody else. What else can you say? Good people out there, bad people out there, that's it, people. These are successful, these people, they did a lot of good things, they did a lot of bad things. Again, don't repeat the bad things, that's it. Sounds simple, you don't need to complicate it. These are all people in our history, in our country's history, world history, there are a lot of good and bad people out there. Thank you.
Teaching at all three of those levels, K-5, 6, 8, and 912, currently having seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. I think it's extremely important for our students to know that people come from different backgrounds, and people are born the way that they are, and you can't change them. Now, in our early education setting, you're going to have to take it slowly, you don't need to tell them everything, but you would be able to introduce it to them in a way that they can understand it. In the middle and high school, you can go more in-depth with it, and more in-depth with it, but there are ways to teach it and make it age-appropriate. Thank you.
So number one, it's government mandate, so we follow that, obviously. That goes without being said. However, this goes back to my answer on CRT, which I answered earlier. My opinion almost doesn't matter, as it goes back to the stakeholders on what we teach and how we teach it. That's the superintendent, the school principals, the teachers, and most importantly, the parents. Almost any topic can be taught at any level, as long as it's taught appropriately. How you teach World War II history, how you teach any sort of the Civil War, how you teach slavery, how you teach any subject. You're not going to teach it the same to a kindergartner as you will a 12th grader. If you are, you're not educating anybody there. Somebody's not being educated in that picture, so it's important that everything is taught at an educational level. Recognizing the contributions of the LGBTQ community, I'm sorry if I missed a letter, I do apologize, is extremely important. One of the greatest heroes of World War II was somebody nobody ever heard of, Alan Turing. He was a mathematician slash computerist who broke the German Enigma code. And without him, probably either World War II would have gone a lot longer, or the Germans would have been more successful. So, and up until about 15 years ago, nobody even heard of him. He ended up committing suicide, basically being forced to commit suicide by the British. So there are many people throughout history of LGBTQ orientation, of Black, of Palestinian, of Jewish, of every ethnicity, who've been misaligned because of something somebody didn't like about them, but made major contributions. So all those contributions have to be celebrated at every level in an age-appropriate manner. Thank you.
So in the district that I work in, being that it's mandated, we're having those discussions about where to insert LGBT within the curriculum. And so I did have a discussion with the superintendent of Clifton and did ask him, you know, a little bit about this, and he basically said that, you know, it's a discussion, that there are certain things that are mandated where the LGBT topics have to be discussed within the curriculum. So there is certain mandates by the states where it has to be and how it has to be implemented. And then there is some leeway in terms of, you know, discussion with teachers and how and what parts, and how sensitive the topic is, you know, how to, the lower levels to a little bit more gentle in terms of presenting, and then obviously building as you go through the different grade levels. So certain things are mandated by the state to be put into the curriculum, and then other parts, you know, there's a little bit more freedom by, you know, discussion among teachers and things like that.
So Clifton is such a diverse community, so we need to teach this. It has to be a certain level for certain age groups, it has to be age-appropriate. If we could focus with our young students in elementary and mainly focus on respect and equality at the elementary level, I think that would be a great start if we can implement that in our curriculum. And then as we get older, we can go a little more in-depth of each topic, and how to make it age-appropriate for each grade level. As we get up to high school, we should be at the highest level of this part of the curriculum. Again, provide these resources at home too, for our families, because you're teaching the children this, but you want to teach the families this too, so it follows through at home. The respect, the equality, the being kind. We talk about PBSIS all the time, but there's positive behavior. It needs to follow through, so we need to provide those resources to our parents as well, and respecting one another is a major thing.
Thank you. The next question's about drugs. So we know there is an organization named Cosum in the city of Clifton Public Department. Other than that, what specific plan do you have to address school violence and substance abuse in the high school? What can you do to ensure the health and safety of our students? So, dear.
I think that this is an area where we have to have a synergy between our school administration, our law enforcement officials, and of course, the Board of Ed, so that we can sit down and, you know, come up with ways and means of trying to educate our students of the dangers of drugs. In Clifton, we do have Clifton Against Substance Abuse, as you mentioned. It's a outstanding organization, and I think that it's necessary for organizations like that to have their say in the question also. It's important not for us to hold back and hope that the, you know, the problem is going to go away. It's not. It's something that we have to focus on, and I think that by coming together as a group, I think we can approach it in the best possible way.
I think communication is key, you know, and it starts from home as well. A lot of these kids are still going through changes physically, psychologically, and a lot of the substance abuse, it affects that too. So unfortunately, some kids start really, really early, and it's devastating, you know? And we know how many, you know, how many funerals that we have gone to for people that we know, that we graduated high school with sadly, you know? And died of things like drug overdoses. So communication is key, starts at home. Parents are guardians, very important to tell them how bad it is to do drugs, alcohol, especially at that young age. You're still developing, your brain is still developing, and it could affect that at any point in time. It's so important. You want to be a successful, educated human being, peoples, places, and things. Those things are negative in your life, you got to stay away from them, period. Thank you.
Sometimes we don't know the situations that our students are facing at home. So letting our students know who they can see in our schools and how they can be helped is the first step, I think, in helping our students with drugs and violence. If there is a problem, they need to know who they can see within our school district, such as their teachers or their school counselors. I think it's awareness of who they can see is the most important thing, so this way we can start them off early, and hopefully, as a district, help those students. So this way, they're not leading a path of destruction. Thank you.
So in the ideal world, I would take these students, let them come to work with me in an ER for one day, and they see all the negative effects of drugs and alcohol, and I promise you, you would not drink or do drugs ever again in your life. It's unfortunate, and this is a problem across the United States. This isn't a problem unique to Clifton. So I would start with looking what's worked at other places. Look around the United States, find somewhere who developed a program. Why do we need to invent something new? I'm sure there are programs out there that have worked in other cities and other communities. Let's bring them to Clifton. Some of them we have, some of them we don't, let's bring them there. The next part would be removing that stigma around mental health. Many people are afraid to go talk to a school counselor because they're afraid they're going to be labeled weak, crazy. Oh, you go speak to a counselor, you're crazy, you're mentally, you know, I'm sorry, I don't use certain words anymore, retarded and stuff, but people make, kids make fun of them, they bully each other. So we have to remove that stigma and say, no, it's totally fine for you to go speak to the school counselor and say, hey, I got a problem at home, I'm having a problem with another student, I have a problem just on my own. How can they help them? So removing that stigma is first, and then also identifying students who may be an issue, and getting them to speak to somebody before they may even know they need to speak to somebody. Many times as educators, as parents, we can identify the problem before the kid can identify the problem themselves. So the three-part, the two-part approach, we look what worked in other districts, and improving our mental health and removing the stigma around mental health within our schools. Thank you.
Well, we have, we have a $5 million grant over five years to help with PBSIS, and it's for all the schools, but again, I think, you know, it's catching it early. And so having this PBSIS, which sets like, you know, expectations, high expectations for proper behavior, is a really good start. So they start in the middle school, where, you know, they could get introduced to drugs at that stage, and, you know, again, that's, it helps them possibly avert going in down that path. Another thing is, you know, having presentations at the high school, more presentations in regards to, you know, doing drugs and alcohol and things like that. Also, one thing that has really had positive results was having officers in the school. And we do have SRO officers, I sit on the legislative committee, and we would like to have more of them, because students create positive relationships, and they look to them almost like a reference group, and start to cultivate that positive relationship, which could actually decrease their, you know, chances for going down the path of drugs and even other incidents. We also hired five new school counselors, one of which in the high school, and then others, so that's important for our students to go and talk to. Thank you.
So my specific plan for substance abuse in the high school. So I'd like to increase our knowledge about substance abuse. I would like family info sessions to recognize substance abuse, assemblies, speakers to come into our high school. We do at the elementary level, we do, always do something in regards to bullying, so this would be great if we did something in the high school level about substance abuse. Get students more involved in clubs and sports, in-school activities, outside activities. Collaborate with the Boys and Girls Club. I know the club is always open certain times, and kids can just go like an open gym night. That would be great if we could do that at the high school. Keeps kids in the building, keeps them occupied, so they don't get into trouble, as we always say, and provides safer options, similar to Project Graduation. Project Graduation is one evening, and that's a great thing, but maybe we can elaborate on that and look for other alternatives to continue that.
I'll get rid of the half-boss one. Okay, so I don't think we, I think we need to go to the elementary schools, start down there, bring awareness to the students about what drug and substance abuse is. I sit on Clifton Against Substance Abuse since 2006. I know the programs that we bring in, the governor cut our funding by two-thirds. So we are making up things that are free, and we're trying to get them in there. But elementary is where it begins. Bringing the parents in, bringing the grandparents in, bringing the caretakers in, to give them awareness of what substance abuse looks like, what to look for, the effects, how to see what happens when you see it on your children, to notice the signs. It's got to start in the elementary school, bring it into the middle school, because I'm sorry to say, I sit on the Drug Alliance since 2006. It's not only a problem in the high school, it's going, it's filtering its way down. You have students that are in the middle school that have alcohol problems. This is fact, I'm not making it up. So we need to get more funding, we need to get more counselors in every level, but we need to get the whole community involved and say, yes, we have a problem. COVID is bringing us to a new state of mental illness. You can't even go on a food line and stand there, something breaks out, and there's disruption, and there's just, mental illness is just going to explode in the next few months and years because of what COVID brought to us. So that's my, I can't, I can go on forever, sorry.
So let's go back to diversity and inclusion. It remains a pressing question, when is it too much? Today, we respond to those who fight for inclusion of African-American history. What about tomorrow, when the Clifton community demands Hispanic history, Islamic history, Jewish history? Do you pick all the above, or do you teach plain old American history or white history? And what happens when the former choice is not beneficial long-term? What do you teach students?
Could you repeat that again, though, because it's a long question?
It is a long question. I'll try to finish this. So today, we teach many, er, I'll just read through this. Today, we respond to those who fight for inclusion of African-American history. What about tomorrow, when the Clifton community demands Hispanic history, Islamic history, Jewish history? Do you pick up, do you pick all the above, or do you teach plain old white history? And what happens when the former choice is not beneficial long-term? What do you teach students? So first, we have to just sort of divvy it up. We don't teach every history at every level. Each grade has their history that they need to be taught, whether it's American history, world history, and the like. At one point, I was thinking about being a, studying history and being a history teacher. My dad is a history teacher, but I end up getting into medicine and nursing. However, we have to teach everybody's history, every race, every color. Every race, every color, every religion has made positive contributions to the world we live in. So at some level, we have to teach that. And the best way to do it is to teach the unvarnished truth. Don't add our own biases in. Don't add our own preconceived notions. Just teach the facts. And that's where you'll win. You can't lose by teaching the facts. This is what happened. It might be a little bit boring. It can make it a little interesting for students. But the reality is, teach the unvarnished truth of what happened to every group. Every group at one point's been victimized. Every group has one time made positive contributions to history. So celebrate the positivity. Recognize the bad things others have done in the past. And promise to make a better future for all our children to live in a world of inclusion. Thank you.
Dr. Danny? Agent Dr. Danny?
Me? Right now?
Yes, right now.
Oh, okay. So just so, because I want to say clearly. So I'm an educator for 20 years. And this is what I have. I have to teach the mandated state curriculum. It changes every few years. And I have to provide the mandated standard, which is the mandated state standard of the curriculum that I am teaching for the lesson that day. I don't have any other option. If an observer comes in, my principal, my vice principal, my supervisor, they know the lesson standard, the mandated state standard that I am teaching. And it's different at the different levels, whether it be seventh grade, eighth grade. That is what I have to teach if I want my job. So I say, if there is a committee that does decide what the state standards are, so that is something that you are passionate about and you would like to see certain curriculum standards, then get involved in the committee because that's what it is. It's state mandated. It's what I have to teach. And it's what the teachers have. They don't just make it up. Thank you.
So we have a very diverse community. So we need to be well-rounded. We need to touch upon a little bit of everything. My suggestion would be, if we were allowed to, grade level can be specific heritage, the good, the bad. And then have our staff be trained to adapt to the change in the mandate and the curriculum and touch upon everything. So by the time we get to that high school level, you've covered almost every single heritage that at least our community has. So that everyone gets to learn a little bit about who their classmate is or who's sitting next to them or who's sitting in front of them.
So I think we have to start thinking about taking away standardized testing. We test every grade all the time. I would like to do, take away with the standardized testing, go back to the basics when I was in school. That would free up more time to give more, it would free up more time to give us and the teachers more time to build a curriculum. I believe that we should cover every culture, every race. That's how we learn to include everybody, inclusion and diversity. I don't know a lot of things about people. I Google everything and I'm hoping, and I sit there and I get worried that, is this factual? Then I gotta go to the Encyclopedia Britannica and I have to have a discussion with her for like three hours about, am I right, am I wrong? So I would agree that we need to, I love your idea, it's great. I would expand on it by getting rid of the mandated standardized testing till we have the time. The teachers are so stressed out because once February, March comes up, they start teaching to the test. And it's not fair because we can't cover things that we want to. If I had my way, I would just take a big eraser, erase standardized testing, and I will put more of the basics in. Teaching everybody reading, writing, arithmetic, what they need to learn to be successful as adults so they can assimilate into the society and make this world a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see the inclusion of all of the heritage, cultural backgrounds, et cetera, in the classroom. I think it is a paramount importance to our children to learn what's going on in the world and to know a little bit about each and every group. I remember many years ago when I was in college, I went to a Catholic college and had to take a course in religions of the world. And it was an eye-opener for me. I did that at 18 years old. I wish I had the opportunity to have had that kind of a background and exposure many years prior to that. So I'd like to see this happen in the district. And I realize that it's not gonna come easily because it has to be mandated from the state. But it is something that I think is important. Look, America is a very diverse country. We can teach all American history, all the good and bad. Again, don't repeat the bad. And when I was in high school, I learned about world history too. So, you know, some of these things seem kind of specialized. I think that you get a well-rounded education over here. And then if you choose to, subsequent to high school, that you want to specialize something, you could do that as well. So this is where we're at. And America has done a lot of outstanding things. We were the first in flight. We did, you know, we developed the polio vaccine, you know? So a lot of good things from this country, a lot of bad things too. Don't repeat the bad things in this country. And I think it's very important people learn, you know, how good we are. How good so many things happen, you know? How many great things this country has achieved over here and how diverse it is and how we don't repeat some of the mistakes that this country has made in the past. Thank you.
In the school district that I work in, I was able to help write the second grade curriculum. And yes, each grade level has their own topic that they have to cover through the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. But the thing is, there are ways to incorporate inclusion and diversity through those topics, through what we're teaching. And there are ways to incorporate that into our teaching and daily lessons. Black History Month, Hispanic History Month should not just be one month and that's it, it's finished. We need to incorporate all of the backgrounds that we have in our districts in order so our students know how people live, what people may be like. And so this way, they become more well-rounded students and they receive a well-rounded education.
Thank you. Bear with us, we're almost there. Emily, just hand me a card. I'm gonna turn this into a scenario. All right. You're at a board meeting. Before we go to closing. You're at a board meeting. We know school boards and the governor's mandate is telling us that we have to teach, sorry, not we, you guys, all nine of you, that you have to teach LGBTQ curriculum in the school districts. And this is, in the scenario here, the school boards in New Jersey are refusing to implement the extreme LGBTQ in anal sex curriculum. I, as a parent, is coming to you as a board, as a, you know, a concerned parent. You have to teach it. But you're getting mixed signals from parents in the community. But you know you gotta do it. But you personally are on the fence. Am I there? What would you do for the parent that wants to hear from all of you on where you would stand? I mean, I turn it to a scenario because the question was sort of already asked. But I also don't want to dismiss it.
Can I try and add to that? What is your knowledge of how conflated these mandates are as it relates to sex education or the updates on the teaching and learning standards of sex education and teaching diversity as it relates to LGBTQ contributions? We're hearing eruptions around the state with parental concerns about teaching kindergartners on specific sexual acts. It's not a mandate. So I'm curious to know, just to add to that, what would your role be in quelling parental concerns and avoiding disruptions at board meetings? We just saw that in Wayne where the police was called. So what is your knowledge or what would your role be?
Batter's up. Anybody? I want to start.
I'll start again, I guess. I go this way. So number one, the most important thing is, when a parent comes to a board meeting, whether it's for those concerns about sex ed or any concern they have, they have the right to be heard and listened to. That's the number one thing. I'm elected by the voters. I work for the voters. I work for the stakeholders in the city of Clifton. So if I'm lucky enough and get your, and get your vote, that's what I will do. I will listen. Then I have to look at the specifics. For me to comment on a very specific type of question is a little hard when I'm not there. I will be honest, as I always am. I don't know the specifics of the mandate of LGBTQ education at levels. I would have to look into it. If it's telling that you have to teach sexual acts to kindergartners, I'm gonna have a huge issue with that. And I'm gonna bring that to my state legislators, and there will be a lot of rockets. I don't believe that's in the mandate. So I think that's something we, as the board, working with our school superintendents, working with our parents, can create a curriculum that meets the governor's mandate, teaches diversity, includes everybody. We have a very diverse district, as Judith mentioned. We speak 65 languages in this district. I knew there were 65 languages in the world. That's a lot of language. That's a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds and who have a lot of different views on a lot of different subjects. So let's listen to all the stakeholders, work out how we meet the mandates of the state, how we educate our children properly, make all the parents, well, not all, but as many parents as we can happy in the education they're receiving. So that one day, when they're all adults, everybody can work together based on a great education they got here in Clifton. Thank you.
Okay. So to bounce off of Abraham?
Yeah.
We need to educate the parents on what the true curriculum means. That's the problem. Because there is a group out there that are going to board of education meetings to solely disrupt the meetings. It's a group. They have a Facebook page. They have all kinds of social media. They have little ticker boards up. So they want to stop the meetings. It's a fallacy. Our, we have a really good curriculum in Clifton High. And I'm gonna tell you, when my son was a senior in high school, he came home and discussed his sex ed class with me. I know it sounds odd. He said, Mom, I wish I had this in middle school. I wish I knew what they were teaching me in middle school when their bodies are starting to change. And then, and things happen. So I wish that would have happened in middle school. I have spoken to the superintendent about this because you have to understand about what happens with kids. They explore. But my son said, I wish I would have known all of this back then. They waited until senior year to get to, too late. What we need to do is when we have a disruptive parent come, we need to listen. Like you said, they have a right to speak. You can't shut anyone down. We have to find out what misinformation they have and give them information. I would have them meet with the superintendent next day and probably the curriculum director and let them see it. Let them sit in on some of the information that we do hand out to the students. They can't sit in on the classroom, but show them what the elementary level's learning, what the middle school level's learning, and what the high school learns, levels learning. Sorry, I'm tongue tied.
So again, I agree with Commissioner Basford and Abraham. We do have to listen to all of our parents. We are a public servant to them. They voted us into the board, if they voted us into board. Again, age-appropriate curriculum would be great. And to touch on what Commissioner Basford said, not just educate the parents, but educate ourselves on the board, or if you're a board member, going to be a board member, to what is specifically mandated. And I would probably ask the question, are parents allowed to opt out? I believe at a certain level, when we teach family life in the district, I think a letter goes home. Families have the option to do that. So I would like to see if that was an option for families to make those parents who are uncomfortable with it have their options.
So I am always about looking at solutions. I don't necessarily think that, I think it's cutting it off at the pass before parents come to the Board of Education meeting. Because I think that, you know, sometimes screaming, yelling, all that, I mean, that's just not the way I am. I think, you know, when you have an issue, you try to go through proper channels. You try to solve it in a respectful, calm manner and get your point across. So what I think would be a beneficial thing would be if I was handling this and I was, let's say, the superintendent in this scenario, I would send out a letter to the family members in the entire district and invite them to a community, you know, to an event where they can ask questions of me, where they can find out questions about the curriculum, where it is for the community then, for those that are interested. And then maybe there would be another meeting where they want to find out more one-on-one or maybe, you know, actually look at the curriculum or guide them or provide them handouts from the state so that they feel very informed about what's going on in the school before they actually have to come to the board meeting. And at that point, they're probably irate and very upset. And that's the way that I would handle it if it was, we're looking at a scenario and I was superintendent.
I would have to agree with what has been said already. It is a tough area for us as educators to be teaching this in the classroom. Luckily, I don't teach sex education as of yet. But, you know, it could come down to it. I think me being informed more on what is going on in a health education class and presenting that to the parent that had come to me, I think I'm the first person that should know about what's going on. And that way, I can inform the parent on what's going on and what's being taught in the classroom. I'd also like to invite the parents out with the supervisor and our superintendent of curriculum instruction to inform our parents of what is mandated, what is not mandated. So this way, the air is cleared. So we don't have our parents and our community members coming to board meetings upset already.
And once again, I think it's a communication issue over here and a trust issue. So they have these professional disruptors or whatever out there. And I think it's a communication issue and a trust issue. You know, there were a lot of months that we were locked down. We couldn't do much. So we were paying attention to these board of education meetings. So we were paying attention to these Board of Education meetings. I guarantee you, there wouldn't be nine people... I don't think there would be nine people here vying for three seats tonight if we didn't think there were issues with this current board over here. So I wouldn't be surprised if someone disrupted like that. But I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what I recall from sex ed. I don't recall if it was seventh or eighth grade. I remember how babies were made. I remember how STDs could happen too. I remember about third input. So this is what I recall, you know? And I think keeping parents informed prior to it, I think that's a critical tip. And I think that's where this issue stems from. Hopefully, we don't have something like this. I'm all for civil society. I think I come here civilly with my opponents over here as well. And I'd like to continue that rapport, you know? But there's definitely a lot of trust and the communication issues over here. The more that people inform proactively, the less something like this will happen. And you'll get that communication if you vote line number four. Thank you. Again, we have to listen to our constituents. If we're fortunate enough to be elected, we have to listen to what they have to say. Hopefully, they are not misinformed. Hopefully, they are willing to listen and not just be rebel-rousers, as I like to call them. And I do believe that any curriculum that is mandated or implemented at any point in time needs to be age-appropriate, okay? So that's something that I would never be a parcel of. It has to be age-appropriate. It can't be something that is just one-stop shopping for everybody. Thank you.
So with that being said, I want to leave all for a good conclusion. If anybody wants any of the candidates' handouts, feel free to come get it. I also acknowledge three board members that are here. Commissioner Dana Beltran, Commissioner Joe Conova, and President Jim Smith of the Board of Education. With that being said, conclusion, turn your up.
Hi, so I'm number nine on the ballot. I'm asking you to consider me for your vote. I come with a plethora of knowledge, experience, dedication, and action. I take action. I will stand on my own two feet. I am not afraid to bring up the harsh issues. I'm not afraid to face the harsh issues. In 10 years, I have missed two meetings. One because my flight was moved down because I was going to Minnesota and there was a big snowstorm coming in and I got snowed in for four more extra days. The second one, there was a special meeting and I got there at 7:05, the vote was taken and everybody was gone. There wasn't a car in the parking lot. That's, in 10 years, I've missed two meetings. I've missed one committee meeting in 10 years. My attendance is impeccable. My dedication is impeccable. My knowledge is impeccable. I am very well-versed in policy. I do my homework, I do my research. When there's an issue coming to the board, I stand up and I face it. Last year during COVID, we had many meetings and I had a run while I was the vice president of the Board of Education. And I ran them and we had a lot of angry parents on the other side of that virtual realm. And we took it. And we worked very hard. What I'm asking you to do is allow me for the next three years to continue my voice to every student. All of my children, 10,403 that go to your district, I consider every one of the students in the district my own child. My children will tell you they had nothing on... They got nothing extra because I worried about everyone, including them. Please vote for number nine. I'm Judith Basford on the ballot. I will be your voice, that is my promise. Thank you.
Vita Marlena Cowan, number eight on the ballot. I have a vested interest in the district. I have three boys that attend the public schools at the elementary level and the fourth student to follow. I have a spouse who is a staff member and a lacrosse coach at the high school. We both get involved in many activities in town. I've been an HSA president for the last three years. I've been on the HSA board for the last five years. I participated in the referendum committees. I hosted a referendum committee forum at an HSA meeting where we invited multiple parents, the parents from multiple schools with a session with Dr. Robotozzi and his architect and other board members that attended. I want to focus on staff retention. I want to focus on student retention. I want to show everyone that our district is amazing and the things that we have to offer in our district. I want to focus on our before-care and after-care program to help those families in need, those working families. That is one of the major things that we need to do. Our safety. I'm a team player. I speak up. As Judy can tell, on these HSA meetings that we have, these quarterly meetings, I am one to always raise my hand, offer a suggestion, make a point. I have experience in a board office. I have experience seeing the ins and outs of running a school district and putting together budgets. I'm a huge supporter of our staff and our students. I want to be the voice for those parents. You might not think that something that you said at drop-off or pickup's important, but I might think it's important. And I might bring it up to the board and I might bring it up to Dr. Robotozzi. And I have done that, and I've done that in the past. And it's made a difference. So vote number eight, Vita Marlena Cowan. Thank you.
Lucy Danny, I'm running for reelection. I'm number seven on the ballot. I'm an educator for 20 years. I love education. I'm 20 years in the Paramus School District, in one district. I'm committed to it. I'm 10 years on the Clifton Board of Education. This isn't a stepping stone for me. I'm very passionate about education, as evidenced by my degrees, by all the things that I've done in education, which, again, I haven't gone to list all the things where I've traveled worldwide, studied educational systems. It's something that I'm very passionate about. A lot of people say, "Why do you want to do this?" I mean, you'll get paid for it. Like, you could do other things with yourself. If not me, who then? I know about education. There's no challenge that comes my way that I can't deal with because I live it. And yes, maybe I'm a teacher and I'm down in, you know, in the wrong part of it, you know, in the trenches. But I still interact with administrators. Having gotten my doctorate, I talk to a lot of the educational administrators. And now being on the board side, I mean, I know how important certain educational issues are. I know which mandates don't matter. I know which things are a waste of time. I know which educational technology will get thrown at the wayside. I see all the waste of technology in, you know, the district that I've been in for 20 years, how I've seen things come and go. I try to cut those things off at the pass. I try to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. I'm passionate about the children. I always put the children first. I think about them whenever I make my decisions. Because first and foremost, I'm an educator. And it's about education. Isn't that what the Board of Education is about? So please vote, Lucy Danny, number seven on the ballot. Lucky number seven.
Good evening, Avram Isman, number six on the ballot. First, thank you to the Palestinian-American Community Center, PAC, for hosting this event tonight. Thank you Fahim for doing an excellent job moderating. Thank you to my fellow candidates for presenting ideas. And thank you to all of you, whether you're here in person or over one of these streams, for sticking here to the end and listening to myself and the other candidates. I'm just going to take this opportunity really to repeat what I said at the beginning and what I said throughout the night. And I hope that message got across. Is number one, I will be a fighter for every single student in Clifton. No matter how they learn, I will fight for them. If they learn in the traditional setting, I will fight for them. If they are gifted and talented, I'm not, that's from New York City really, but I will fight for them to have that better education. If they learn differently, they need special education needs, I will fight to ensure they get that education. I will fight at the state level to get the funding that we are entitled to as a district and ensure we're getting that. I'll be fiscally responsible with taxpayer money. Everybody works hard for their money. You're not just a piggy bank for the board to keep spending it and spending it with no proven results. I'll go through that budget line by line, say, why are we spending this money? How is this improving the education of our children here in Clifton? And lastly, which might be the most important to many people here tonight based on the questions, is I will be transparent. You have an issue, you call me, you email me. I will fight to have the curriculum published online so parents can review it, they can look at what their children are learning. And if they have a problem, contact me. I will work to address that issue. That's the most important thing. We as a board have to be transparent to our taxpayers, to our stakeholders, and to the parents. They have to know what their children are learning and how it's being taught. So that should be open to them at all times. I would be honored if two weeks from today, on November 2nd, you choose me, Avram Isman, number six on the ballot, as one of your three votes. Thank you and have a great night.
Once again, my name is Frank Casper. I'm number five on the school board ballot. Just to sum everything up that has gone on this evening. Number one, I am currently the vice president of the school board as well as the vice president of the St. County School Board Association for Legislation. I'm going to continue to fight if re-elected to the school board. There were three accomplishments that we... Three accomplishments that I feel has helped our district over the past four years that I've been on the school district, on the school board. Number one, we hired a superintendent that really cares about our students. He really cares and has shown everyone the importance of a well-rounded education. Number two, in the first two years I was on the school board, our taxes stayed under 1%. The last two years, our taxes have... We stayed steady at zero. Number three, we have a referendum that is going to improve the safety, security, HVAC, you name it. We have it in there to help our students as well as our staff with safety. I'm looking forward to helping continue and support our children, our staff, and our taxpayers if re-elected. Thank you.
Mark Brodak, line number four. As I said earlier today, I'm the child of an immigrant and a refugee. And I want to put our children first. And I want parents to have more of a say in their children's education. I'm an outsider. I'm not inside this exclusive club. I don't work for any school district. I'm the parent of a current Clifton Public School child. That's how I differentiate myself. And I want all students to be encouraged to finish school, get a full-time job, get married if they want, and start a family. That's exactly what I want. I think that's in almost everybody's best interest, especially these kids who go through CHS. And there are some board members over here. Maybe their children were attending school, but they aren't anymore. But mine, your children, they currently are attending schools. Who's listening to them? Who's going to listen to the parents? Who is going to put our children first? Line number four, Mark Brodak, make sure you vote for me. Thank you, Chikran. I love you all and God bless America. Good night, everybody. Bob Diarco, number two on the ballot. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Clifton and a 1972 graduate of Clifton High School. I am the father of RJ and Melissa, who graduated from CHS in 2003 and 2007 respectively. I reside in Clifton Center with my wife of 38 years, Patricia, who is a 1975 graduate of Clifton High School. As I mentioned earlier, I am a human resources professional with a background in labor relations, employee relations, staffing, budgeting, et cetera. I am a two-time former member of the Clifton Board of Education and a former member of the Clifton Library Board, where I served as president. I have dedicated over 45 years to the youth of the city of Clifton. And I, in 1984, was honored as an outstanding young man of America. That was when I was a young man. In 2019, I was inducted as a Hall of Fame member in the Clifton Boys and Girls Club Hall of Fame. I feel that my knowledge, skill, and ability uniquely qualifies me for another term on the board. I'd like to do this because I feel as though I have much to offer. And therefore, I hope that you will support me on November 2nd. And vote for number two. My slogan is "Number Two on the Ballot, But First for Our Kids." Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. So first of all, thank you again for the participation. As a reminder, all the Board of Education candidates are on the back of paper ballots if you're voting by mail. And remind, oh, I'm sorry, screen. Also, I'm reminding people to vote on November 2nd. The Board of Education candidates are going to be on the bottom when you go vote on November 2nd. So when you go for Governor Down, don't forget about your Board of Education member, otherwise you being here will be a waste. And then if you have any questions, you can reach out to PAC.